September 17th meeting. I don't.
You're right.
I'm sorry?
I just started, you have.
Okay. Are we okay? Do we need to?
Okay.
Okay, all right. So for the September 17th meeting, I don't have any corrections to the minutes. Does anyone have any corrections to the minutes?
Motion to accept minutes.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
I think we had three abstentions. Did you catch those?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then we have the first item for us to address. I think all of you are aware of the fact that our chairperson has been asked to accept an interim position, at least on the town council, and because of that is no longer qualified to serve on the zoning board, and therefore has tended his resignation. So that puts us into the enviable position of having to elect leadership, at least for the interim period, which would take us through the end of this calendar year into January, when we would elect officers for the new year. So the first order would be to elect a chairperson for this interim period, and then we'll proceed from there to elect a vice chairperson. The floor will be open for nominations.
I nominate vice chair. I said I nominate the vice chair.
Second.
Any other nominations?
For the election of Vice Chair McCullough to the position of Board Chair. Vice Chair McCullough, do you vote?
I'll abstain.
You're allowed to vote for yourself.
I know, but I'll abstain. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Caulfield.
Yes.
Mr. Church.
Here, yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Mr. Vera.
Yes.
Mr. Griffith.
Yes.
Mr. Cruz.
I believe I have to abstain.
Correct.
All right. So that is six yeses.
Congratulations.
One.
Number Cruz is not eligible to be in the vote. You're not, you're, for reasons that make me look this up. Hold on, don't go anywhere. You raised it.
It's trying to be legal, I thought.
That's right.
Mr. Griffith, you're the third alternate.
Correct.
Mr. Cruz is the fourth alternate, so one man out is the last alternate, so that's why he's not eligible.
Okay, okay.
All right. So I believe you can make the declaration, I think.
Yeah, so we have, congratulations, you are now the chairman, Mr. McCullough, so the next order of business would be to elect a vice chairperson. Again, that's for the interim period through the end of the year. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Jerry Simon.
Second.
Okay, second.
Any further nominations? Roll call?
All right. Vice Chair McCullough, or Chair McCullough, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Caulfield.
Yes.
Mr. Church.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Can I vote now?
You can.
I'll abstain.
Mr. Vera.
Yes.
Mr. Griffith.
Yes.
All right, that is six votes in the affirmative and one abstention.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. All right. Yeah, I think it was important for me to abstain, therefore, I'm always in the position of being able to say I didn't vote for this. So, in any event, we look forward to working together and carrying on, I think, what has been very important and a great tradition, actually, for the zoning board, and we'll proceed accordingly. So we have some resolutions to review. The first one is the resolution related to application 2934 for 292 Orange Road, Keisha Owens. Zanab, who's eligible to vote on this?
That would be Chair McCullough, Mr. Caulfield, Vice Chair Simon, and Mr. Cruz.
Is there eligible?
Yeah.
You're right.
There are, let's see, I think, a couple of notes. On page three, item number two, which is at the top of the page, page number three, the reference to a small deck, let's see where that is. A new deck. Yes, the last sentence of paragraph two, "A new deck containing a five-person hot tub will be added on the left side of the dwelling. An eight-foot-tall cedar plank privacy screen will wrap around the corner of the deck closest to the street." That should, on the sentence, "A new deck containing a five-person hot tub will be added on the left side of the primary dwelling." So we're not talking about the ADU, we're talking about the primary dwelling on that And then in paragraph three, just a minor grammatical correction, and that is, beginning of the first sentence, "The applicant presented justification, et cetera." Are there any other corrections to the resolution? Would someone move the approval of the resolution with the amendments?
I move approve the resolution with the changes set by the chair.
Second.
All in favor? I think we do a roll call on this, right? Roll call? Okay.
Yes. Chair McCullough.
Yes.
Vice Chair Simon.
Yes.
Mr. Cruz.
Yes.
Mr. Caulfield.
Yes.
All right, that resolution is approved. The second resolution is application 29387 Columbus Avenue, Tracy and Matthew Miller. Again, one minor correction that I noted, that is on page one, paragraph one, where in the second sentence, "The lot measures," just correcting the word "measures," please. I didn't note any other corrections to the resolution. Did anyone else want to make any corrections to the resolution? All right, would someone move approval of the resolution as amended? And that's the same people are eligible also?
Yeah. I move this resolution with the changes presented by the chair.
Second.
Yes.
Vice Chair Simon.
Yes.
Mr. Caulfield.
Yes.
Mr. Cruz.
Yes.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. The third resolution is application 29429 Cloverhill Place, Alex and Maddie Siliotta Young. Again, I noted that on page one, number two, the first two sentences are redundant. I mean, the second sentence itself is redundant to the first sentence, so if you would strike I didn't note any other corrections to that resolution. Did anyone else offer any corrections? All right, would someone make a motion to approve?
Move approve, I move to approve this motion with the changes set by the chair.
Second.
Chair McCullough.
Yes.
Vice Chair Simon.
Yes.
Mr. Caulfield.
Yes.
Mr. Cruz.
Yes.
All right. All right, we're moving into new business, then, will be, I'm sorry? We just did that.
Oh.
Yeah, thanks. So, moving to new business, then, we have application 294649 Northview Avenue, William Berry is the listed owner. This application is for variances required to construct a second-story addition at the northeast rare corner of the dwelling. The property is in the R11 Family Zone District and is designated on the township maps as Lot Three and Block 2605. Variants are requested for Moncler Code 34745D to permit a rear yard setback of 8.66 feet, where a minimum of 25 feet is required. Also, a variance from Moncler Code 334745C1 to permit a northerly side yard setback of 3.84 feet in alignment with the existing dwelling, where a minimum side yard setback of six feet is required, and a variance from Moncler Code 34745E to permit the existing building coverage of 29 percent, where a maximum of 25 percent is permitted. And the applicant seeks any other variances that may be required. Property notice has been given to the public?
Yes.
And taxes and fees have all been paid?
Yes, taxes are up to date.
All right, so, Zanab, would you raise your right hand for the two applications we're going to hear tonight? Do you swear to tell the truth to the matters pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and position with the township.
Zanab Gosmi, Assistant Planner. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Petry and Mr. Barry, would you both raise your right hands? Do you swear to tell the truth to the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your names and addresses. Is that microphone on? And if it, and pull it closer to you also, please.
J. Michael Petry, P-E-T-R-Y, 155 Passaic Avenue, Suite 350 in Fairfield, New Jersey.
And, Mr. Petry, you're testifying today as the capacity as an architect?
And a planner.
And planner, okay.
Engineer if I need to.
Well, I'd have to know which hat you're wearing, so.
Primarily planning testimony this evening.
Okay, and all three licenses are all in good standing?
Yes, they are.
And Mr. Petry has been accepted before this board on numerous occasions, so unless there's any objection, I think we can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, and congratulations, Mr. Chair. It's good to finally get to call you that. The subject property is designated as Lot Three and Block 2605. It's commonly known as 49 Northview Avenue. The parcel is approximately 40 feet wide and 75 feet deep, having a total area of 3,060 feet. There's an existing two-and-a-half-story home on the parcel. It's slightly off-center towards the left, and to the rear, a driveway is located on the right side, and a rear entrance in the northeast corner of the structure. All of this is shown on the sheet one of your plans, and it's on the screen right now. So basically, the existing house located, the driveway is on this side, there's a rear entry area in the back, and that rear entry area is exactly where the addition is going. The applicant is proposing a modest 38-square-foot addition on a second story only in the northwest east corner of the home, immediately above the rear entrance. The extension expands the house four feet to the rear, and is a total of nine feet seven inches wide. So we're talking the equivalent to almost three-quarters, or one-and-a-half times the size of that screen. It's similar in both size and style to the addition that was placed on the neighboring home to its right, or to its left, when you're facing it from the street, utilizing this space along with the, let me see. So utilizing this additional space here and reducing the size of the existing bathroom here, Mr. Barry hopes to create a new bathroom and a small bedroom. And by small bedroom, I mean it's eight feet nine inches by 10 feet nine inches, so it's a nursery in essence. The existing house sits on the property, as I indicated, hovering near the north northerly line, as shown on the cover sheet, twink, and that existing setback in the rear is 3.88 feet. This addition, which is shown in the shaded area right there, that little area, extends that 3.88-foot setback, or, I'm sorry, 3.84-foot setback, back an additional four feet. This is in deference to your ordinance, which requires a six-foot setback. So we're not getting any closer to the line than we are today, but we are extending how close we are by four feet. Because the home is located towards the rear of the lot, there is an existing 9.23-foot setback at the corner of the existing house as it juts out in the rear. We are, because we're filling in this area in this corner, we are reducing that setback to 8.66 feet, where 25 feet is required. Again, the house is skewed to the rear property line, so when we go out in that direction, we get a little bit closer to the property line. Finally, despite the fact that the addition extends above an existing portion of the structure, as well as above an existing deck, which under your ordinance counts towards the building coverage, the existing building coverage is non-conforming at 29 percent, where 25 percent is the limit. The applicant has been creative in adding space with little impact to the zoning standards. The addition is located over a deck that, as I said by ordinance, is considered part of the building coverage, and so he's not increasing the building coverage. While the existing building does not meet the side yard setback, the proposed addition does not measurably impact that side yard and is limited to the second story only, thus limiting the impact. Finally, the addition becomes only marginally closer to the rear property line, where the existing is 9.23 feet and the proposed is 8.66 feet, so we're getting closer to the rear property line, but by less than six and three-quarters inches, so less than the length of my hand. In my opinion, the application can be considered under either a C1 or C2 criteria. The C1 criteria is supported by the fact that the existing home, as it sits on an existing undersized lot, makes it virtually impossible to add any space to the home without requesting multiple variances. The C2 criteria is supported by the following purposes of planning. Since this is reflective of what the next-door neighbor did, and I can tell you by photo, if I introduced it, I did prepare a quick photo board this afternoon, because I thought it was important to show the board what we're doing. So here's the existing home from the front.
And we're going to mark that as A1 with today's date?
Okay. The existing house at the front, the existing house at the rear, and the bottom photo shows that the house from the rear, along with the neighboring house from the rear. Now, if you look at what the house next door did, they bumped out in the exact same location and the exact same size, doing exactly what the applicant is proposing. Only a second floor, partially over an existing structure, and partially over their rear entrance. So I think a picture is worth a thousand words, and that's why I wanted to bring this this evening. While the existing, the C1 criteria, as I indicated, I think is supported by the lot size, the C2 criteria by the following purposes of planning. I think since this is reflective of what's next door, I'd offer this variance promotes purpose I of the municipal land use law, creating a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques. What both of these property owners are doing is small additions to make a two-bedroom house to a three-bedroom house, and in doing that, having, doing a project that takes very little in terms of additional size. I offer that the variance request also promotes purpose G of the municipal land use law, providing sufficient space in an appropriate location for this residential use to expand. Finally, I do offer that the proposal also meets purpose C, which provides adequate light air and open space by virtue of its exceptionally small size, as well as the fact that it floats above the ground in essence. From a negative criteria perspective, I honestly don't see how a 38-square-foot addition could constitute a substantial detriment to anything, much less the public good, but I would say, especially when this variance is identical to what already exists on the adjacent parcel, this is in the rear of the property, where the two houses kind of come together, and so it's not visible from the street, so I don't see this as being a significant or a substantial detriment to the public good. As I said with the photo, I think imitation is the best form of flattery, but in this case, I believe it constitutes a creative design for an otherwise difficult single-family house addition. For the intent and purposes of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, I'd offer that the impact of the addition is so minor, the side yard really isn't getting any smaller, the rear yard is being reduced by six and three-quarters inches, and the building coverage remains the same, since we're extending over what is already considered building area. As such, I don't see how these exceptional minor changes could substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Therefore, it's my opinion that this board can grant the requested variances under either the C1 or C2 criteria, with the negative criteria having been met. And that's all I have to offer. I wanted to try to make my testimony as small as the addition.
All right, thank you, Mr. Petry.
Thank you.
Mr. Church, questions?
Yeah. If we're operating in a very small space here, I can see that, and have you discussed this with the neighbor? The neighbor doesn't object?
The neighbor does not object.
That you're mimicking his addition?
No.
Okay, so there's no detriment to his property at all with this?
No, our houses are, actually, the rest of the house is already identical. They were two, I guess, model homes built at the same time, but they're, he, no, it would have no impact on his property whatsoever, as far as I can see.
I appreciate the fact that these lots are small, and to make additions is difficult, and you've been creative. The, without the objections of the neighbor, I don't, right now, feel, unless I hear from my colleagues, I don't have any objections to what I've seen on the application at this time.
Ms. Harris.
Just out of curiosity, are you planning on building closets, a closet in this room?
I have no plan to do that at the moment, just because any closet space would intrude on the interior dimension of the room, which is already quite small. An armoire or a piece of furniture would be what we would look at. This will be, you know, it's a very tiny room for a very tiny person, and he is not in need of a closet at this time.
Okay. I was just asking, because typically you'd need a closet to be considered a bedroom, but that's fine if you don't.
Ms. Harris, that's, by code, that's actually not necessarily true anymore. It used to be that way, but it's not, but the room has been designed with an egress window, so it can serve as a bedroom under the coat.
Yeah. The roof on the new addition, you have an H shape there, is the leader on that? On the bottom left?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yes, there will be roof leaders that carry that down.
For both sides?
For both sides, yes.
All right. No further questions, thank you.
Mr. Simon?
For the first variance, where is the six inches being lost?
So, the addition is going on.
The addition is going on the rear of the house here, and the, you can see that the rear property line is skewed to the rear of the house. So, right now, the closest point of the house is this existing bump-out that you see, that you see in the photo on A1.
Okay, yeah, I see it.
Right there, right there. And by carrying that across the width of the back of the house, that's how we get six inches closer, because the property line is skewed to the house.
So it wasn't due to any protrusion or anything under design, it's just the shape of the, and the layout of the house encroaching?
Exactly.
All right, no other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes, were there any other, like, design considerations you took, any other options, or did you just go with this one from the get-go?
Well, I think the, I'm sorry.
There it is. I think the intention, Mr. Barry's intention, when we sat down to talk about this, was to create a small addition. He's willing to give up, and if you look at the plan for the bathroom, the existing bathroom, it has, it has a stall shower, it has a jacuzzi, it has a pair of sinks, and it has, you know, a water closet with a linen closet inside, and he's reducing the size of that, he's eliminating fixtures, this is only going to have a tub with a shower. So he's giving up inside of the house in order to create enough space. We couldn't, we could have taken this same configuration and gone out further, but in reflecting at what the neighbor had done, we felt that that was an appropriate approach, given what the neighborhood looks like, and we have to be reflective of that in our design.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Vera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the question I have is the, there's a second bedroom in the second floor, is that correct?
There, right now, there are two bedrooms, there's the master bedroom, and there's a second bedroom here.
Okay.
And the, this entire space here is the bathroom.
Okay.
So what we've done is, we've reduced the size of the bathroom to be more of a standard bath. It's got a bathtub slash shower combination, it's got a sink and a toilet, and a small linen closet in that space, and we've taken the rest of that bathroom, and we've used it with this little addition to create a nursery.
Okay. Yeah, so the second bedroom is not being reduced in size?
No, it's not being reduced in size, because from a plumbing perspective, we've got, we've got all the plumbing pipes here today, so if you look at the existing plan, the, I'm sorry, the water closet is in the corner here, and the sinks are here, so we have plumbing pipes running into this area now, and we don't have to do that much work renovation-wise to make the bathroom work. So if we, if we made this front bedroom, if we made that front bedroom smaller, we take that, all of those pipes, and we move them a little further away from where they are. are today, and that just makes that a little bit more costly.
Yeah.
To, to even out the spaces, but I understand what you're asking.
Yeah. And then the, the other question is, for the new bedroom, do you have to, like HVAC, do you have to do any modifications to the, you know, heating and ventilation?
It's relatively minor.
Minor, so you, you don't need a new condenser outside or anything like that?
No, no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Most of the space is already in the house. I mean, what we're adding is 38 square feet. You can count ceiling tiles, that's, that's always the fun part.
All right, thank you.
So, when you're, when you're playing that game, you can always look up. So every ceiling tile in a room like this is two-by-four. So if you want to know about how big the addition is, you can say, well, it's four-by-nine, it's, it's from that track there to there, and it's that wide, that's it. So, as I said, about...
Little bit bigger than the screen. Mr. Griffith?
I find that submission very reasonable, I have no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a, I think, a couple of questions for clarity in terms of the, the project that you're undertaking. And I think, taking your, I think, one of your last comments, Mr. Petrie, about trying to make sure that this is a reasonably affordable project. I, I did have a question about whether or not you had considered a larger expansion, meaning going across the full, the full width of, of the house, as opposed to just a small section. Would you speak to that in terms of what your rationale was, was around that?
If you guys want to approve something larger, I'm certainly open.
I'd like to.
Apologies.
I have a reason why I'm going to ask that question, I'm asking that question, but I'd like to hear your...
From my perspective, the layout of the house, the stairs going up to that second floor run along the back of the house, so expanding past that would not, it would make a very odd-shaped room. I mean, what you would have, especially because, for me, the limiting, where I personally wouldn't want to go any further, is closer to that back property line in my house. What I would be doing, in my mind, was encroaching on that. And if I kept the same line we're referring to now, which is that four-foot, all I'd be creating would be a four-foot corridor next to the stair, which doesn't serve any use, you know, practical use, I'm sure you could put, like, Christmas decorations there or some, some such, but it would not be a benefit to me.
So you're, you're making, in this, in this project, a decision to considerably scale back the bathroom facilities on the second floor in order to accommodate a third bedroom. And so you have a much smaller bathroom...
Yes.
...to service three bedrooms. Is there, is there also a full bathroom on the first floor, or?
There is a partial bath on the first floor, there is a full bath existing in the basement.
In the basement. And had you, had you considered any other design approaches to the, to the bathroom on the second floor, or this was the only one that made sense moving forward?
I considered, actually, quite a few with layout. It's, it is a small bath. I'll be honest with you, I'm not really, most of the square footage of the existing bathroom is in the center, it's just floor tile, it doesn't serve much of a purpose, I don't need a long walk from the sink to the shower, so it's not really hardship for me to give that up. As far as layout, this is a standard three-piece bath, you know, there are only so many ways you can rearrange, but they're tested and they work. So, I have no issue with that.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, one of the reasons why I asked the question is, is because we, you know, we, we try to look at, you know, these, these projects not only through the lens of the person, of the family that is currently occupying the property, but also through the lens of, of people who might succeed you in that property. And whether or not, you know, the adjustments that have been made would, would sort of facilitate the needs of others, and whether or not it might lead us to proposals down the road that would create additional variances and et cetera. So that's, that's sort of what's behind my questioning in terms of how you sort of looked at this project, and how, how we sort of respond to it in turn.
Yes, sir. That, I would say in answer to that, that the existing bath as is, has not been renovated in quite some time. We purchased this house about two years ago. The previous owner, I guess, I don't remember exactly how long they had it, but it was for a few years, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of five to 10. That large jacuzzi tub, which even when it was first installed, is not appropriate to bathe the child, it simply does not work. That has not been used by myself or the previous owner, it is, does not function. The existing stand-up shower as it is, has completely, the waterproofing and tile have failed, and it is in desperate need of being replaced. The vanity millwork is deteriorating, and, I mean, the toilet works. So that was also, when conceiving of where to put space for an expanding family, understanding that the bathroom would need to be completely renovated anyway, which goes into explaining that, I don't think that would trigger a variance, but, like I said, the room we're creating is tiny. It's, it's a nursery for a child, once he's grown a bit, and my other child's out of the house, he can switch to that larger room, this will turn into a small office maybe, but were any family in the future planning on expanding this standard-sized bathroom that we'll be creating, they'll be expanding into the space of that office, exactly back where it used to be. So again, I don't see any reason why they would need, or it would be practical for them to expand the building envelope.
Then, in terms of the external features of, of the project, the siding and roofing materials will be consistent with what currently exists?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we've maintained the same roof pitch, we've maintained the same overhang, and, and the finished materials will be matching the existing.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions. Does anybody in the, any members of the public have any comments or statements that they'd like to make about this project?
More questions?
Okay, hearing none. Do you have any final comments that you'd like to make before we bring this to vote by the zoning board?
Obviously, we'd like to thank the board for their time and their attention, we think this is a good application, we think we've been reasonable in the approach, and we hope that the board can recognize that and see to grant the approval for these variances that we seek this evening. Thank you.
Well, then, turn first to Mr. Church for any additional comments.
I have no additional comments. I'd just like to move to state that, like I said in my opening remarks, that it's very difficult with these properties to make extensions. I think that what he's proposing is ideal for their current use. I have no objections to anything in this plan, I think it's well-thought-out, given the, the space and the, what's available. And as long as the drainage and the facade and the roofing remain intact or inclined to the existing building, I would vote in favor of this app.
Ms. Harris?
Yes, I'm in favor of this application. This is a tiny, tiny lot with very little, very few options in terms of, you know, where to add on, so I think you've done the most with what you have. And the variances that you're requesting are pretty much keeping to existing condition, so I have no issues with this application.
Mr. Caulfield?
You know, in my house, the, the previous tenant raised four kids, I still don't know how they did it, but they did it. I'm happy with bringing this bedroom back, it makes sense to, I mean, I would imagine where all these kids would be, in the sense of, you know, another bedroom is important, so I'm in favor. Good luck.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz?
I'm in favor of the application, I very much appreciate the, the modest and reasonable design.
Mr. Vera?
I'm also in favor of the application, I think this is a reasonable, a very thoughtful design, so I'm in favor.
Mr. Griffith?
I'm in favor of the application, I think it's very well-prepared and thoughtfully presented. I thought, why did you make it bigger, and I looked hard, I agree with your conclusions. Thank you.
I'm also in favor of, of the application. I think that it's a reason, it's a reasonable application and project, given the size of the property and the reality of the neighborhood. So it is consistent, I think, with, with homes that are in the area. So I'm also in favor of it, and don't see a need for making any special conditions for this, for this, so I would say that...
Let me suggest three, if I might, okay?
Yes, okay.
So I, I think should be a condition that the siding and roofing materials of the addition shall match the existing home. I think we should include what we've done on a number of other occasions, the standard conditions that the applicant's bound by all representations made on his behalf at the public hearing, and finally, that the applicant shall be responsible for inspection fees incurred under Montclair Code Section 202-27, as well as escrow fees incurred in connection with review of this matter. So I would include in any motion of approval, those three conditions.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have the, the motion before us with the conditions as stated by our legal counsel.
May I?
Yes, please.
So the drawings show the siding, and they show the...
Okay, it, it, it wasn't clear to me that the drawing showed it. Is that correct, Mr. Petrie?
I believe they do, but we don't mind the condition.
Okay, all right, I'm just...
No, but I think Mr. Griffith makes a good point, I mean, if the drawings unequivocally show that it's not necessarily that it conditions there...
They're not labeled, so...
They're not...
The, the elevations aren't labeled, the material, so...
Okay, so let's leave the condition in.
Fair enough, thank you. All right, so we have the motion before us then, with the conditions as stated by our legal counsel.
Who made that motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's true, you just saw it.
I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion.
I was actually about to call for the motion, but I wanted to help save us before then, but that's fine. So we have a motion before us, and there's, is there a second? All right, Mr. Caulfield has, has offered a second.
All right, I will call the roll. Chair McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes. All right, thank you very much, your project is approved.
Church, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, our next application is application 2943, 31 Gray Street, Kristen Hall and Earl Brown. Variances are requested from Montclair Code 34745C4A to permit a dwelling width of 33 feet 2 inches, where a maximum dwelling width of 32 feet 6 inches is permitted. From Montclair Code 34745C1, to permit a side yard setback of 2 feet 4 inches from the easterly side property line, where a minimum of 6 feet is permitted. From Montclair Code 34745E, to permit a principal building coverage of 34% of the lot area, where a maximum of 25% is permitted. From Montclair Code 34746C, to permit a parking space between the dwelling and the street. From Montclair Code 34727.1F, to permit a retaining wall and fence in the west side yard that exceeds 4.5 feet yard, 4.5 foot in combined height, without providing the required setback of 1 foot per foot of fence height. And from Montclair Code 34745A2, to exceed 2.5 stories in design as it relates to the proposed enclosed rear stairway, and potentially the addition to the west side of the house involving the excavation and lowering of finished grades adjoining the dwelling. The applicant also seeks any other variances that may be required. Property notice was given to the public?
Yes, it was.
And taxes and fees have all been paid?
Yes, they were.
All right. You're welcome.
And then, please just...
Would you both, sorry, would you both raise your right hands? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board? State your names and addresses, please.
Earl Brown, 311 St. Montclair.
Terrence Harriston, 324, 84X, New York, New York.
And Mr. Harriston, you're a, a registered architect in the state of New Jersey, is that correct? Your license is in good standing?
Yes.
Okay, we can proceed.
And then could you please press the push button on your mics?
Okay.
You still need to pressure. Thank you.
So, what we're proposing to do here is, is not a minor alteration, like the previous application. So what we're really doing here is reimagining the house, and it's sort of in consultation with designers that have been working with Earl Brown and Christian Hall for the last, maybe 18 months or so, and sort of going over their plans for rethinking this house for their emerging family. It was driven by the fact that when we initially approached the project, that they wanted to build a garage, an enclosed garage. So the house that exists currently doesn't have any enclosed garage, so parking is all on the site. So also, one of the conditions of the house was the situation with the cellar and the ceiling height being less, less than 6 feet. So the idea there was to build the garage, to lower the height of the cellar, so we had a full floor there, and have the entrance from the garage at the same level as the new cellar height, which would be a regular standard 8-foot ceiling. And above that, we would do initial living space, and then on that second floor above the garage addition would be an extension of the bedroom spaces and a master suite on the top floor, which is basically an attic space right now, that would be re, re, sort of, reimagined for a master suite. Take a look at the plans. So what you see here is, is there a mouse, or just touch, touch, touch? So what you see here is, is there a mouse, or just touch, touch, touch?
It's touch, or is that a little mouse, like the tracking pad?
Oh, the tracking pad, okay, yes. So we have the existing lot, which is the 783-square-foot house with the 242-square-foot deck on the rear. And with the extension of the area for the new garage, we'd be adding approximately 500 square feet to that, and an additional deck on the back that extends the length of the new house, which more or less doubles the size of the current deck. That's why we're getting that non-compliance with the site requirement and the variance request for the 39-foot percent lot increase. The house as it is now was probably renovated at least one time, so when we're reimagining this, what we're thinking of doing is opening up that sort of first-floor plan, and the house as it currently exists has a stairway that sort of divides the living areas... house as it currently exists has a stairway that sort of divides the living areas in half. So the thought behind that was to remove that stair bulk, and we moved it and put it to the exterior of the house, and that's the shaded area at the bottom, which will contain the new stair. That allows us to open up the living spaces and then provide a new living dining room area on the first floor above the garage. That opens up to the deck in the rear. Then above that, we have the sleeping areas, which are the bedrooms for the family, the children's bedrooms. So there'd be three bedrooms on this level, and there're currently two children, but one of the children's special needs, so we have a special room for that child that would only be used for that purpose. So we're maintaining the four bedrooms that the house has, but we just have a special room for, in this case, it's called the sensory, sensory therapy room. And above that, we have our master suite. So these are all basically reimagined spaces, enlarged spaces, that are in this new addition of the house. For the elevations, what we're proposing to do is re-clad the house. The current house is vinyl siding. So what we're doing here is putting a new sort of fiber cement siding on hardy board and new windows. The windows would be double glazed and would have thermal coating. So that would wrap around the entire house. House would be re-clad with a new roof and new roofing. And for the final elevation, you see here, or the rendering, you see the addition on the side with the sort of, with the driveway going down to the garage level. Then above that, you'd have your living area, and then above that, the bedroom areas. And then at that ground level, we just re-cladded an existing stone that's there. So that would wrap around the entire new primer of the house. And that's pretty much it.
All right, Mr. Church, you want to...
I have no questions right now.
All right, Ms. Harris.
Yes. On the attic level, what you're calling the crawl space, is there any program that you're planning for that?
No, not at now. It's crawl space, unconditioned crawl space.
So the roof line is a little bit unusual. Is there any reason why you...
Chose to continue...
Chose to continue that?
Well, the idea was just to continue that line from the existing roof. So that's where that came from, just to continue the line of the existing roof. So the area above it would just be crawl space.
Okay. Where are the mechanicals for the building?
Well, so the mechanicals will be redone. It'll be a new... So there is an existing boiler in the basement, but we'll do a ducted system. So we do have areas where we will put new ducts in the open spaces in the houses, mostly around the stair area, and then that core in the center, which contains the bathroom. So there'll be new ductwork for an air conditioning system that can do heating and cooling. Probably a dual heat pump type system is what we've been looking at.
And can you talk a little bit about the retaining wall?
So, yes, the retaining wall on the side, that is there to provide an area where secondary access to the garage level. So the idea is that it's more or less flush with grade, but it slopes down to the area that we're excavating, so that we contain, we sort of keep that same grade level, but it goes down to the new area that we're excavating, and it's a secondary entrance to the garage.
And where's, is there a man door in the garage?
Yes, there's a door at that level, at the level of the retaining wall. There should be a door there.
I see it. It's all the way in the back.
Yeah, it's all the way in, yes. It's all the way in the back at the rear of the garage.
So is this path, is this walkway at the level of the garage, or is it at the existing elevation?
It's at the level of the garage. And it's a landscaped area.
And the slope to the garage, from the renderings, appears to be pretty steep.
The slope is, I believe it's, hang on. I think I have an other plan, but it's within the code, whatever the requirement is for minimum, maximum slope.
And what's the plan for drainage here?
What we planned to do was, under the deck, to provide a dry well for the additional roof area that we're adding. So it'd be roughly 6-foot diameter dry well, under the deck.
Under the deck in the back?
Yeah, so, yeah, we, all the new roof area would drain to the dry well with downspouts.
And how about the slope driveway? How does that drain?
All areas would drain to the dry well, so...
And that's not on your site?
That's not on these plans, but it's on a full construction set plan. That'll be used for permitting.
Okay, that's all that I... Oh, actually, one more question. It appears that you have balconies on every level. Can you talk about that?
Um, the balconies at the rear, yeah. Those, these were added off the bedrooms, so it was just something to provide exterior space off of the bedrooms in the rear. I don't believe there're, and on the sides, I don't believe there're any in the front. So, yes, it's just another design feature for the rear. It's over, above the decks in the rear.
Mr. Caulfield?
It looks like the backyard is higher than the front yard. Is that correct?
It's fairly flat, yeah. I think there's a slight grade change, yeah.
There is, so there's a walkway that we talked about that goes to the door to the garage, right?
Yes.
That doesn't, that doesn't get you to the backyard, correct?
No, it's just access to the garage.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Simon?
Hi. So you said for the, in front of the garage door, you're gonna have drains that're gonna lead it to the well?
Yes.
The retaining wall, how tall is it?
It's flush with grade, but it increases in height as it goes down to the new garage level or the new cellar level. So that height is approximately 8 feet at the bottom. So it's gonna go from grade down to about 8 feet.
So it's gonna be 8 feet tall?
At the bottom, yeah. At the bottom of the, at the landing to the garage entrance. So it slopes down. I mean, I think the rendering might give you a better idea of what, how that work. Well, that sort of shows one angle, but...
Yeah, is that permitted? Because isn't it above, if it's a wall, isn't it, isn't that above?
How far above grade is that retaining wall at the back?
It's above, above the grade of the cellar?
Above the grade of the, the average grade of the site.
It's, it's right at grade. It's right at grade.
So the top of...
The top has a railing on it, yeah.
But will that be at grade?
At grade, yeah. That'll be at grade. So the wall won't go above grade, so it's, yeah, it doesn't show so well here. But it's, if you look at the rendering...
Also, if anyone's BMW lights are on, if they're here.
So here, here is the retaining wall here on the left. Basically mimics this wall that's already here.
We're just gonna take a momentary respite.
That's grade level. So the bottom of the house, well, actually not quite. That's like 4 feet above grade. Bottom of the stair, stone on the left is grade level, so where the grass is. So the wall starts at grade. Which one? Oh, yeah, about 4 feet, yeah. 4 feet, 4 and 1/2. At the bottom. It slopes. Okay, so you can see here that on the left, there's just the start of the retaining wall. Basically, it's mimicked on the other side. It starts at grade and it slopes down to the bottom of the new cellar level, and that's where the door, the second exterior door to the garage is.
Okay. Going back to the front, sorry. So on existing house, you have, for the front, you have some down pipes from the...
Yes, those will all be replaced, but we'll keep them all.
So they will, you will still have pipes in that location, or you're just gonna reroute that along the top, going to the back?
The existing ones will be in the same location, then the new addition will have them on the same locations respective to that side. So they'll basically be mirror image.
I'm going to the mechanicals, which are currently in the basement. Are they gonna remain in the basement? You just, they're just being updated?
They'll remain in the basement. But new ducts, new ducts for the...
New ducts, okay. But in the same location?
Yes. They will be, for the air, for the air handler or the condenser will be behind the deck in the rear yard. So that is an outdoor unit.
Currently, it's in the basement, though?
There is no, there is one currently.
There's nothing in?
No, there's no air conditioning currently.
Okay, this is replacing existing HVAC system. What's there now?
There is a new boiler, but it doesn't have air conditioning. So it's a different type of unit, heat only.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes, good evening. Just a couple of questions about the drainage, and we'll start there. It's, looks like from the rendering that it's gonna be sloping down into the garage. Do you have any drainage mitigation for water?
Well, all the drains, so there's drain pipes under all of this, as somebody's shown on the contract or the permit set. That'll be filed. Yeah, it all drains below, below that lowest level into the dry well, which will be lower than all of those levels.
And will the, the dry well be able to function that deep underground, if it's gonna be like, you know, like 10, 12 feet underground?
Well, yes, it'll be under the excavated area in the back of the house near the, you know, the back of the cellar. So it'll be at that level, starts at that level and will go below it.
And then, if you could just talk about the sensory therapy room a bit?
I'll let you talk about that.
So my daughter is autistic and she has epilepsy. So one of the things that resulted once we moved in the house, which to this day, her neurologist, none of us know why, is that the current stair area, she, when she's about to have an episode, she will go up the two flights of stairs and she'll stay on the landing of the second floor, and she has her episodes. So what we found is that if we somehow prevent her, frankly, from accessing the stairs, which is close to impossible, but if we redirect her or whatever, she's able to just kind of calm down a bit and not necessarily control the epilepsy, but relax herself enough so that whatever the episode is, it's short-lived. One of the things that we've also found is that we have a dedicated space for her, and so we have her keyboard there, we have pads on the floor, we have everything that allows her to just kind of go and relax. And between relaxing and sleep, those are the two causal variables that have aided in her minimizing her episodes. And currently, with, obviously with medication as well, and trying to redirect her to the current sensory room, she has dropped her episodes significantly. I mean, maybe she has one a day, whereas before she'd have multiple, she'd awaken with an episode. So the sensory room is critical for us in that we get to direct her and allow her to operate in that space. Also, one of the things that comes with some kids with autism is that they can really kind of fixate on something. And so she has fixated on breaking things, frankly, and so the sensory room allows her to go in and there's nothing that she can break, and she doesn't mind spending time there, so.
A lot of the design elements were developed with the designers, were with these issues in mind. The stair location, the wider pathway in the garage, and so...
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Vera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Back to the drainage question. So I guess a, just a general question, strategy-wise, the plan is to, if you get the approval today, you will engage a civil engineer to prepare those, you know, calculations for the dry well and so on?
Well, we have them, and they're on the set that will be presenting for the permit. We do have a contractor on board, so he will submit those to the board, yes. And I believe there's a geotechnical review that it goes through. So I'm not sure about that, but...
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
There's a lot going on here.
Yes, it's not a, not a minor upgrade.
I apologize, but I just wanna kind of go through this list to make sure I'm tracking correctly. And I'll start with just saying that it's a small lot. I understand that, and that's, that's part of, a part of the picture. So maximum width, you're increasing the width from 32 to 33.2, just 1 foot 2 inches beyond the code, as one asked. The second is lot coverage from 25 percent to 34 percent, which is, that's a significant percentage difference.
That does include the deck, which in this jurisdiction, that includes lot coverage. So that's a portion of that. There's an existing deck, but we're basically doubling it in size.
Yeah. Small lot, but yeah, it includes the deck. Parking, you're adding a third parking place in front of the house?
We're not adding a third, but I believe it's a code requirement because there are four bedrooms. So I don't think you have three cars. So the two cars would be housed in the, in the, in the garage, but the third car is a code requirement, is I believe it, for the four-bedroom house.
Right, and the code requirement is, is that we don't park in front of the house?
Yes. So that's, that's why we're asking for the variance, because of the location of the driveway, because the situation now is you're parking in front of the house.
Okay. And you're comfortable that that driveway that slopes down and that walkway that is collecting rainwater during torrential downstorms, that you can deal with that water?
Yes, that's why we put the dry well. And we do a lot of these types of projects in New York City, which have really strong storm water management requirements for obvious reasons, especially now. So dry wells have become, there are other ways of mitigate it, but dry well is probably the most efficient way to do it. Large enough capacity dry well won't run off.
The materials on the building, I, I see symbols, but I don't see a legend that explains to me what the materials are that are proposed for the roof and the wall.
We have a full set of construction documents, which has a full sort of list of all the materials on them, which will, which will be going when we file for the permit. But, you know, it's basically hardy board and a type of asphalt shingle, architectural shingle is the roofing, and the windows are, I'm not sure which vendor, or Select Marvin, I believe, double glazed, low E, yeah.
So it looks as if the siding is vertical siding, and then horizontal siding, so it's-
It's a mix of vertical. It's, yeah, there is a pattern there, it's a mix of vertical and horizontal.
The windows are very large, and very modern?
Very modern.
Shall we say?
It is a reimagining of the house, for sure.
I understand, I'm just, so when I look at the size of the windows, my, in my mind, I wonder, are you complying with the energy code? With such, so much glass?
Well, yes, I guess in New Jersey, it all is, in New York, it's, it's a bit different. There is a specific code for it, but we would do, if necessary, res-check calculation to go over those, but yeah, there are, there are low E, and they're double glazed, which is usually the typical condition there.
Yeah, well, low E and double glazed, triple glazed, it only gets you so far, though, at a certain point. Okay, thank you. And then my last thing that I had written down is, the neighborhood, what is the general aesthetic in the neighborhood, and what do you have to say about this building fitting into the character of the neighborhood?
It's a traditional neighborhood. There haven't been a lot of renovations in this, on this block like this, so, you know, they're probably the first, and probably many more to come. But, you know, when this house was purchased by the current owners, you know, they were looking for a space where they could start a family and grow a family. The current house doesn't meet those needs.
The question, the question is about the aesthetic, not about the size?
Just to speak to the aesthetic, so, on Stevens Street, which is the street over from us, there's a house that's roughly similar to what we're planning. They've also added two additional new homes that are at variance, for lack of a better term, with the regular, with the rest of the homes on the street. I've spoken with my neighbors also about this, and shared, shared our plans with it. All of our neighbors, with the exception of the neighbor directly across the street, have lived in their homes for thirty-plus years. One, one of my neighbors is, works for the town, and just recently retired, doesn't have any kids, will likely move back to his home, home country, at some point. But they're all actually welcoming the renovations, so, and I think primarily, just for the fact that they're planning on selling soon. So, but what we've, what we've tried to do is have a, you know, home that is appealing for us, but also is forward-looking for the street, frankly. And it's, and again, if you walk up and down the street, you'll see that homes are adding different space, they are doing new things with their windows, and we anticipate it's something that will continue.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Mr. Church, do you have questions? No question, okay. So, a variety of topics, like Mr. Griffith, that I'd like to, to go over with you. I do wanna get clarification, Mr. Harrison, because when you made your, when you were making your initial presentation to us, and correct me if, if I just simply misheard you, but I thought I heard you make reference to this project resulting in the building coverage standing at thirty-nine percent, whereas in terms of what was proposed before us, was, was it increased to thirty-four percent, so which is, is correct?
You mean the lot coverage?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, uh- It's thirty-four percent proposed.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure-
So that was a mistake, if it was thirty-
We're clear about that. Okay, thank you. So, um, again, there are a variety of topics, so there, there's no particular order, so bear with me. So, let's, I wanna then begin with, with the topic that Mr. Cruz introduced, which was around the sensory needs of, of this project. And, Mr. Harrison, you, you made reference to the fact that the sensory needs did have influences in terms of the project. I'd like to, I'd like to explore that a little bit more, so that we more fully sort of understand what those may be, in terms of the size of the project, certainly the expansion of, of the property, because while it is certainly a well-established neighborhood, it already is a large property, large building on that block. And so, we're talking about an expansion of, of the, of the building, and we're talking about the, the windows, as Mr. Griffith had, had, had raised. So just talk a little bit about some of the, some of the influences that are applied to, to this project, that, that we really need to make sure that we understand.
Well, initially, like we mentioned before, it started with, it started with the need to put in the garage, sort of put in this enclosed two-car garage, which in and of itself is a pretty large area to house two garages. So, the footprint, the new footprint, pretty much came out of that. And also, this idea of rethinking the circulation of the house, and we kind of realized in surveying the house, that at some point, it's an older home, at some point, there was a renovation that divided the house in half, and what probably was an original stair tower, or the stair, which is probably on the side, like in an older house, it was moved to the center of the house. So basically, you have the stair cut, the house cut in half, you have a room in the front of the, in the stair, and a room behind the stair. So, when we were rethinking this, we thought, well, maybe if we pulled that stair unit out and made that its own element, which it is in the back now, it rises, got a separate element in the back, it would open up that space in the middle. And that's kinda where we sort of developed that whole idea of this open plan with the area above the new garage, and this open area in the existing part of the house. As far as the sensory ideas, these were, worked in a lot of detail with the designers, so Earl might be able to better speak to some of those issues. But in terms of the footprint, it's coming from pulling that stair out, and making it a side element, and then the area above the new garage, which kinda gives us that new footprint.
Yeah, I wanna come back to the garage for a moment, but Mr. Brown, why don't you speak to some of the sensory influences?
Sure, so, you know, part of the planning, and, you know, and again, it's, it's simple, it's, I'm embarrassed, because my son's here, so to the extent that, you know, I'm showing him some simple analysis, it's, you know, I'll take it, but I just didn't want those stairs where they were. I-
Yeah, it limits the house in many ways, it kinda, like I said, divides it in half, and you have a front house and a back house, and you have two smaller rooms, and, you know, neither one of them are as functional as you want them to be.
But the issue also, really, with the stairs is, so, on two separate occasions, my daughter has, and she has the scars to prove it, has gone to that stair level, and initially, when we moved in the home, she'd have these episodes, and she would just get there and drop, and she'd just, her body would just drop. So, first time, we couldn't have been in the house for six months, she goes to the stairway, I'm running up after her, she gets there, and so, here's the banister, and she, she's looking over it, and she just drops, and her chin hits, and then a gas just comes over. Second time, you know, it was a Saturday, we kinda getting ready to go do something, and she runs up the stairs, me and Kristen, we just lose sight of her. And when we catch sight of her, she's hanging over the banister, and she has an episode, and she falls on the stairs, and she gets a cut above her eye, so we rushed her to the hospital for that. So, so this project really is, you know, when it comes to trying to reimagine this home, a lot of motivation came from Zoe, and just trying to think of ways to prevent her from hurting herself. As she's gotten older, she's done less of it. She doesn't have the episodes where she just drops. But, um, but yeah, that's, you know, the, we stumbled on the fact that the room was somewhere that she would go and just calm down. We just, that was part of COVID, too. I mean, we had to do our, you know, her little class in, in that room, on the monitor and everything, and she just calmed down, so.
Thank you, thank you. So I was, you know, wondering about, you know, for example, the size of the windows, as well as the volume, volume of windows, is that, is that influenced at all by, by these conditions, or is, is just, it's just a design?
More or less a design element. I don't wanna speak too much for what the designers chose, but yeah, I mean, I think to bring in as much light in there as possible. I mean, I think, in terms of laying out the windows, they followed the location of the original windows, there are additional, there are a lot more additional windows as well, but particularly in the, on the front facade, there was a following location of the original windows. Those windows did, they were traditional double-hung windows with dormer, with shutters on the side.
Good. Yeah, it's just, it's just that, you know, I mean, they're, especially on the front, you know, they're, they are very substantial, and so-
It's a bold look.
Yeah, it is a very, it's, it's, it's nothing wrong with it, but it is a bold look, it is a, clearly a deviation from, from the neighborhood itself, maybe it will influence, as you say, in time, other projects that will take place in, in the neighborhood, but it is certainly something which is significantly different. With respect to the, to the garage, now, you, the way that you've designed this, is that you have essentially cars stacked, three in a row. Had you considered a side-by-side garage?
Uh, we did, but we were already running into issues with side lot clearances, so, you know, for the side yard setback. And to put them side-by-side, we would be over that.
You would be over that, so that's why you-
Yeah. That would be, that would be preferred, honestly, but this was more easy to comply with the code, or to minimize the variance request.
Right. I mean, you know, you also made reference to the fact that, that currently, one of the vehicles of the owners is, is perhaps ordinarily parked on the street?
Well, not on the street, but in the, in the yard.
We park both cars on the driveway.
In the driveway, but there's no garage, yeah.
The car that's parked in the street?
No, no.
And one of those is, is, is on the driveway, and one is on the lawn?
No, no, they're just lined up behind one another.
One, one-
One behind the other.
Okay, all right. And so, do you have any concern that having three vehicles in that sort of line, that you may end up having a situation where, just because you have to keep moving vehicles, that one ends up on the street?
So we, we, we won't have three vehicles?
The third vehicle is shown for code compliance.
Okay, so it's really just-
Yes.
Then, with respect to the, to the, to the drywall, I, I thought that you made reference to it being under the deck?
Under the deck, yes.
It will be under the deck?
Yes, well, the duck, yes, it'll be under the deck.
Okay. And then the, the, the leaders will, will they be connected to that drywall, or will they go out to-
The leaders on the addition to the house will be connected to the drywall.
Okay, so those-
Yes. And those will be internal, so they'll be within the wall cavity.
Okay. So on the western side of the house, this is a very, very narrow separation between this house and the, and the property to the-
The, the east property lot, the east, yeah, yeah, there is, that's an existing condition, so-
I'm sorry?
That's an existing-
Yes, I know, I understand. So is, is, is there, are there any leaders going on that side of the house?
Yes, they're existing, we'll just replace the existing leaders there, so.
And, and they don't drain onto the neighbor's property at all?
They drain to the yard, so we're not changing the draining on the existing roof. Just the new areas.
Uh, one of the, one of the proposals is for there to be a cigar room in the, in the basement?
It's an existing room.
It's an existing room?
Yeah, so we're, it'll be part of the excavation of that level, so it'll get a, it'll go to higher ceiling, but it stays in the same place, same size, no change in footprint.
And how, how does that vent?
Um, pretty well, actually. So, the, the vent goes from the cigar room, and it goes to the east side of the house, still under, at the basement level, and then the vent from the bathroom that's on that level is also connected to that, so it, it vents out very, very well.
And the ventilation would have no impact on the neighbor to the east?
So far, it's been there for, how long?
Was it, was it there when you moved in?
Well, I had it built in 2019. So, it's been there since 2019, I've never gotten a complaint from it. And if I was gonna get a complaint, it would be from that neighbor. He, he is the mayor of the street, if you would, so.
Okay, all right, okay. So, then, would you speak about the, the fencing around the perimeter of the property? What, what are your plans? I mean, you're doing such massive reimagining of the property itself, or-
We hadn't planned any fencing around the perimeter.
I would love a fence, but it's not gonna happen.
There is, there is currently fencing there, right?
Well, in the back, yeah. So we're gonna put up a new fence for the back, but on the side, it's just gonna hopefully be some, some trees?
There will be landscaping at some point, so.
I don't have a say in that part so much, just gonna wait and see what it looks like.
And, and, and so what kind of fencing are you planning on the back?
We haven't really discussed it yet, but I just, it's an old fence, it's, I don't know how long it's been there, but it's, it's breaking down. And so, you know, the neighbor behind us has something that's pretty big, I don't think we'd go that route, but I just want something to, you know, look better than what it looks like currently. But no plans, we haven't discussed it yet.
And, and on the, the rendering of the, sort of what the final project might look like, there is, it looks like a pretty substantial, is it a tree or vegetation that would be to the, to the right of the driveway?
I think that's supposed to indicate existing trees, but it might not be completely accurate.
Yeah, so currently, there's, my neighbor has a bunch of stuff there. I, I would call it just overgrowth, frankly, but I'd like to put some trees there, so, and he, and he, he and I have discussed that, you know, but we haven't discussed what type of trees, or what have, so.
We haven't done a landscape plan, so that would have been, that would be a separate project.
But that would be on your property, on your part?
So, I, I would like it to be on my property, but currently, it's his, all of that stuff that's there now, that's, that's on his property. So it's just, you know, I, I don't know how to describe it, it's just overgrowth, frankly.
Okay. So, one, on, one picture here, I mean, we, we show, we show the car, and we show some garbage cans, and it looks like a storage facility. Are those your neighbors?
No, that's, that's ours.
That's on your property?
Yeah.
Yeah, because of the way the house is sited, on the east side, since it's so close to that east property line, we have a much larger side yard on the west property line. So all that area is, is, is part of the site, in the photo.
And then, what, what is your, what is your plan as far as, because now you're looking at putting this garage in that area, what, what's your intent as far as where you will store garbage, and, and how will that be moved out to the street? I guess this walkway is probably the way that that would happen, but where would that be placed on this?
Yeah, so at the bottom of the, the walkway, I think, you know, on the side, we can keep our, our garbage containers there, but I'm also thinking about doing something behind the garage. I haven't really figured it out yet, but yeah, something that just kinda contains them, because the raccoons would get into them and everything, so. I haven't really figured it out yet, but yeah, something that just kind of contains them, because the raccoons would get into them and everything, so-
What are your, what are your thoughts in terms of external lighting on the property?
There are a couple of fixtures, and you can see some on the rendering. If you see, I miss it a lot here. So, you see down here on the garage entrance, there are some wall sconce type fixtures, so that's the type. Something that, you know, it's modern fixture, sort of vertical sconce type. And I think those are at the garage and possibly in front of the front door. I think that's the limit of it.
Are there other questions from the board?
I have a few. There's no existing plan, so can you talk a little bit about what's existing that will remain? Are you completely modifying all the floors of the house or?
Yes, basically, it's a gut interior. So, we are keeping, we are keeping the existing house, the exterior envelope of the existing house is just being reclad. That's it. New windows are being reclad with the addition. But interior wise, it's a gut. It's all new spaces on the different levels.
Okay, so like the bedrooms on the second level, those are all, those are-
They're reconfigured, they're reconfigured. The same number of rooms, but reconfiguration.
Okay. And then, the max width requirement is thirty-two and you're proposing thirty-three and two inches?
Yes.
Is there any reason you couldn't comply with the thirty-two feet, or the thirty-two?
In going through the design and layout, it just worked much better with that extra foot and two inches, whatever it was. So, it gave us that aisle in the garage for loading and unloading, that ADA aisle that we have there. And then also gave us more space in what will be the new kitchen.
So, what's, so the new, the interior dimension of the addition?
The interior dimension?
Yeah. Like what's the width of that bedroom number one?
Bedroom number one on the, oh, that one, okay. So, the exterior dimension is twelve foot five inches. And it's roughly eight inch wall, so it's a little lower, ten, ten and a half?
And then, bedroom number two, you've got that really wide window, both in plan and in your elevations. It looks like it's fixed. Do you have any operable windows for that bedroom?
No, it's not operable.
Okay, but you'll need an egress window somewhere in here.
For bedroom number two?
Yeah. The front bedroom.
Oh, okay, well, we can look at that.
And I'm assuming in bedroom number one, the one adjacent to the desk is an egress window?
I don't, I think these are all fixed windows. I'll have to confirm them, but I think they are.
Okay, so that'll be a condition that you comply with the code there. And then, I guess, Zainab, I have a question about the planning memo in relation to item F, the variance for three forty-seven dash forty-five A.
Yes.
Can you explain that a little bit?
Yes, so, so the rear elevation shows that exterior stairway with the flat roof, because there's no slope in that portion of the home, that's considered a three-story structure. And so, we, in the public notice, said that we weren't sure exactly if the front area would also qualify with the excavated garage, but at least the three-story to the rear stairway is a three-story structure.
So, that's just the stair tower portion, so the circulation?
Got it, okay, that's all that I have.
Yes.
Regarding the retaining wall, you have a metal railing. What is that designed for?
Guard rail, it's a guard rail.
Just a guard rail?
Guard rail, probably steel rail with maybe tensile cables.
Would that be enough, 'cause per testimony, that's an eight-foot drop?
It would be a standard rail of forty-two inches. And then, the cables between would have to have a maximum four-inch separation. So, standard code compliant rail that you'd have on any roof or deck.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Just wanted to get, just clarification then on three forty-seven forty-five A two. We, it reads that potentially, let me just read the whole thing. To exceed two-point-five stories in design as it relates to the proposed enclosed new, enclosed rear stairway and potentially the addition to the west side of the house. Would you clarify what that means?
I can add some light to where that came from. So, in discussing with the zoning officer, I think he determined that it could potentially be classified as a three-story structure to the, regarding the west addition and the garage, but he wasn't sure, if that makes sense.
Because of the, what would trigger that requirement?
Well, you're excavating, so it's unclear if it's average grade, right?
Yeah.
Average grade?
Yeah, the mean adjoining grade from ground level wouldn't be determined based on the elevations and drawings here. So, potentially, that area could also be classified as a three-story structure once it gets into the permitting phase and they have all of that information.
Mrs. Sullivan, would that, would that trigger a condition?
Well, I think if the application's approved, we're gonna say that's to the extent necessary, that variance is granted. So, I think that's how we're hearing that, right?
Anything else? Yes, Mr. Gruff?
I apologize, this probably represents my misunderstanding, but I don't understand the difference in the stair. What's changing in the stair from your existing condition to the new condition that helps you with your daughter?
Well, the only thing I can tell you is that when we're in any other home with stairs, she doesn't do that. And she only does it there, at that spot. And so, I have no science behind it. The neurologists have no science behind it. But we, you know, as far as the new home, we welcome the idea of moving the stairs to the back so that we could have more space in the home. But as far as Zoe and her reaction to those stairs, I don't know. I don't know what the difference is, but I do know that it won't be those stairs if it's approved.
You're telling me the stairs are moving from the existing condition to the new construction, is that right?
The stairs are being moved from where they are currently to the back of the home.
There's no existing plan. There's no existing plan. There's no existing plan.
There's no existing plan, right?
Yeah. It's not-
Oh, so you can't see, yeah, the- They can't see where the stairs are right now, that's the issue. You can't see that the stairs are actually in the middle of the house, so, yeah.
I hear you, I just-
You don't see that.
Looking at the drawings, I didn't see anything communicated. I see one set of stairs are toys in the same place as the back.
Gotcha.
All right, are there members of the public that would like to offer any comments or ask questions about this application? You're welcome. Okay, if you could step up to the microphone, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
Yes.
Okay, please state your name and address.
I'm Marcus Tong in Valley Row, twenty-eighth Valley Row. So, I'm a licensed architect as well. I just have a few questions for you. In the application, you stated statement regarding ADUs. I don't see any-
That was removed.
Okay, gotcha. For the question about the slope, the Moncler quote states the requirement's ten percent and your driveway is twenty-five feet. That means you have a drop of two hundred and five feet, right? But your proposed drop is five feet. That means you have effectively a twenty percent slope. And that's not something that you're reflecting?
I think we measured it as eight percent, but I can confirm that, yeah.
Could you tell us how you came up with the twenty percent?
So, twenty-five, twenty-five feet, ten percent of that is two-point-five feet.
Yeah.
And then, for the parking requirement, you stated you needed the ADA parking requirement. And in the drawing, you don't show that ADA parking requirement. The car itself requires eight feet and then five feet for the ADA aisle.
We show on the plan here a five-foot aisle next to the car on the site plan.
Your entry space only have eleven foot and a half. And then, for storm water management, you are looking for about nine-hundred-and-thirty square foot of increase of impervious space. And the township requires two times of that for water retention. And I don't see how you can fit that under your deck. And it's not recommended to fit it under your deck, because it will cause structural issues with your building and the deck itself.
Let me just answer that. I think, you know, in the event this application was approved, I think we would have to impose the condition that the applicant would install a drywell or appropriate storm water management measures as required by the township engineer.
Right. And then, for railings or fall protections, as you were aware, that your slope, proposed slope right now, it's not, well, you will require a fall protection at the front entry of the driveway, because anyone that can trip over can drop down five feet.
Yeah, we're putting a railing around the retaining wall.
And then, for, just for your knowledge, parking requirement for four bedrooms in New Jersey is two parking space. So, I think you can-
We are getting different information.
Okay. And then, for the design portion, for the window, as noted before, you have all fixed windows. You are failing the air calculations for your bedrooms in addition to the egress requirements.
So, we will review the windows, yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
We will look at the fixed windows, so, yeah, we did.
That's all my comments. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, I'm Stephen Gill.
Okay, are you affiliated with the applicant?
Yes.
I'm affiliated with the applicant, all right.
Okay, so, do you want to call this person as a witness?
Sure.
You're the, you're the architect.
Yes.
Okay, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Stephen Gill, one seventeen West Fifteenth Street, New York, New York, one zero zero one one.
Okay, Mr. Gill, are you a registered architect in the state of New Jersey?
I am not. I'm a consultant, I do code consulting.
Okay, I mean, we have an architect here. I'm not sure why Mr. Gill is testifying.
I simply wanted to say for the record, concerning the windows, we've been speaking to the designers. First of all, the size of the windows have to do with the light therapy. That's one of the conditions. And the other, the fixed windows, we have not selected the final windows yet. We are working with Marvin, and I believe they're gonna be operable windows, so that will be changed in the drawings. And I was just, I just wanted to respond to the gentleman. The railings that we have around the property are the adequate height railings. We have not yet finalized the design of the railings, but we do have the adequate heights determined. And as far as the drywell, we're speaking to engineers, and we are aware that the location of the drywell is, you know, has to be determined by them and by geotechnical studies. But we are, the design, the initial design, and I think where the confusion is, the initial design had an ADU on the property, so we had another structure. At this point now, that's no longer part of the design. And so, the location of the drywell is going to depend on where we finalize the deck, the deck line and the house line. So, I just wanted to say that for the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
I also just wanted to add regarding the bedrooms and parking requirement. We counted in the zoning review, the sensory and therapy room as a bedroom.
Okay.
So, there would be four bedrooms on the second floor and then the primary bedroom above, so that would-
Would that have to be counted as a bedroom, that room?
Yes, it would. Per zoning, that would classify as a bedroom, so that would be five rooms, which requires three parking spaces.
What about the slope issue that the neighbor raised? Is there a slope variance or waiver that's required by this application?
I would have to look into it. I can check.
We'll confirm that, because we're going five feet, so we'll double check that angle. But the measurements we have were eight percent grade.
I mean, how would we deal with that? Because you are, you are going down five feet, but you're showing on your plan that the depth of the driveway is twenty-five feet, so that is a twenty percent grade. So, assuming that that is the case, how would you address that? Like how, would we possibly address that?
Well, the first question the applicant would be, is there a way to make it comply? And if not, then would you amend your application to seek the requested relief?
No, we wouldn't make it comply. We would adjust the design for compliance. We wouldn't see what variance there, yeah.
Ten percent.
It's ten percent, and after that, it requires a review from the engineering department.
Okay, so the applicant's stipulating that the maximum driveway grade would be, not exceed ten percent?
Yes.
You're aware that to meet that slope, you would have to reduce the, reduce the building height?
Or the amount of excavation, the depth of excavation, yeah.
Yes, well, we'll, that will definitely review that, but we won't make it comply. We wouldn't ask for variance for that requirement.
Yeah, so the slopes aren't in the zoning code. They're dealt with through, yeah, engineering, chapter two nine four of the ordinance.
So, if there's non-compliance, so, but the applicant's stipulated they're gonna make it comply- it comply, so...
So I think that simplifies it.
Yeah. And we'll hold them to it. All right, any other questions? Okay, then let's hear final comments from the members of the board. We'll be doing Mr. Church.
But don't they have closing statements?
I'm sorry, thank you very much.
Well, we just want to thank the board for your time and for your patience, especially Zainab for helping us through this process. So we've been back and forth quite a bit with this, but definitely appreciate your efforts. And as I said, we are really reimagining this property. We want to make something that's actually what we see as a big improvement over what's currently there. And also to address a lot of the concerns that Errol has brought up tonight. And just to give them the home that they hope for when they actually relocated to this area a few years ago. Would you like to?
Yeah, I would add this. You know, when we started our design process against their interest, the designers asked, you know, "Why don't you just buy another home?" And the reason that we want to do everything on 31 Gray Street is because we moved from upstate New York, where it was very myopically minded to be generous, to a street where it's probably one of the most diverse streets in all of Montclair. And we get the opportunity to raise our children on that street. And so, we're raising kids who are not going to be shocked at seeing two women and children together or two men and children together. They're not going to be shocked at seeing a black man and a white woman married. We have it all. And that's the reason why we're doing everything that we're looking to do at least on Gray Street. And that's why we wouldn't choose any other street. That's it for me. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Church? This is your deliberation. Prior to the vote.
Okay. I was concerned when I saw the application at first about wanting parking permission in front of the building. I don't see that as a problem here with the driveway. Now, I may be missing something. We don't allow parking spaces in front of structures. They have to be on a driveway or someplace else, so that concerned me. During the discussions tonight, the change of the facade of the building is really out of character for that neighborhood right now. I know in the future, yeah, it may change, but, and you may be a pioneer in changing it, but that was another concern of mine. I had concerns about the use of the room, the special room. You satisfied that for me. The driveway, I have experienced driveways like that, not in this town, but in other towns, where the sloping is very essential with the heavy rains we've been getting, that the water coming down those driveways has to be handled quickly or it goes right through the garage. And I don't know that what you have there now is going to be able to do that. I would want to see a dry well either in the driveway if you can or somehow get the water through that area quickly or you're going to have flooding in your garage. That's just my opinion. So, other than that, with the discussions that have been going on, the technical discussions, I believe that the application is a good application. It fulfills your needs, fulfills your needs for your daughter and for your family. And I'm always in favor of that. I think that's great, that you've done that. However, I'm just concerned about the facade. The facade is out of character, and I know that can change, it can change over time. But I have no basic problems with the application after hearing my colleagues discuss it. I just feel that there should be conditions, and as we go on, before we make a decision, I think some conditions should be put on concerning the driving, the driveway, and some conditions for the foliage around, whether that's yours or his or whose. That has to be addressed. So, other than that, I just wait for everybody to comment.
I think I'm generally in favor of this application. I do think the dwelling width, the dwelling width variance, like you could meet those requirements. Zainab, you have in the planning report that 32 and a half feet are permitted, is that correct?
Yes, based on the building law.
Okay. So it's even less than what you have on your zoning chart, so I think you would be able to comply with that variance with relative, relatively negative, positive, or without relatively negative impacts on your plan. The building height variance, I understand why it's needed for the back of the building. I'm not sure that I, I believe that it's required for the addition because of the excavation. I just don't know how we condition that in the resolution so that it's not an issue for the homeowners when they go in for permit. And then just my two cents, you know, I love the dark finishes, but I, it hurts my heart when I think about your electric bill and the heat load that you're introducing to your house. And so, I would just ask that you reconsider that. It is out of character for the neighborhood, but I don't think design is static, and I think it should change with the times. I just think that maybe the choice of color might cause you problems down the road.
I'm in favor. Going through it helped me come to the understanding of what you guys are doing, so I'm in favor. Thank you.
I'm generally in favor. I think there are some open engineering questions, which would be part of the conditions of approval. But I grew up in a house with a slanted driveway, and I spent many Saturday mornings mopping up. So I'd be, pay extra attention to either putting some kind of sump in front because the flow and even just water from the street that would go down the driveway definitely inundated whatever we had for years. Also, I don't know what the transition is from the curb going down such a steep slope, but I've had cars which would scrape at the top of the driveway, which also caused issues. So I would definitely be, pay extra attention to whatever flood recommendations from the engineer and to just really pay attention to that slope. But I'm generally in favor.
I'm also generally in favor. I would agree with some of my colleagues in terms of the facade being not in character with the neighborhood. I do agree that you, you know, as part of your testimony, you said that you would comply with the 10% slope. And then when it comes to the stormwater, I'm not sure what the requirements are for a minor development, but Montclair generally has boot-in soils, and those tend to be very, very flaky in terms of whether or not they're good at, you know, retaining water or not. And so, I would strongly recommend, if not make it a condition, that you do a geotechnical investigation because if the dry well fails, then the overflow is going to be your garage slash cigar room. So, other than that, though, I think it's a good application. Thank you.
I'm also in favor of the application. I think when I was reviewing the application first, there were a few open questions, but I think you did a great job explaining those open questions for me. But I think that the drainage is the biggest concern that I have, and I will share those concerns. I will share those same thoughts that my colleagues mentioned. I guess, you know, the strategy will be engage the geotech engineer and civil engineer quickly and kind of develop that plan. But I'm in favor.
I agree that the, I think that you could comply with the width requirement without significant compromise to the design. There are so many things. Obviously, all the things that you say you comply with, so the stormwater you'll take care of, the energy code you'll take care of, railings you'll take care of, the maximum slope you'll take care of. That'll all be required. I worry about how much it will cost to do those things.
Well, we already know.
Not our business, right?
Correct.
Understood.
Well, they already know it's comforting.
The materials, I don't know what the materials are. I don't see any existing plans. I see five bedrooms and five full baths, five and a half baths. It's a lot. And it doesn't comply with the neighborhood character. And quite honestly, I'm really split on this issue because I like to promote modern design, but we have traditionally in this group insisted on compliance with the neighborhood character. And I don't see much presentation of the neighborhood character, and what little I do see, it doesn't seem to fit in, so I feel at oars. Do I have to have a position?
Oh, you don't because you don't get to vote.
Good.
The board gets the benefit of your comments, but you're now required to do so.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, I mean, I have to be honest and say that, you know, my initial impression was that the existing building is already imposing in the neighborhood. And what is being proposed makes it that much more imposing. And I think part of what you're asking of this zoning board is to join you in your exercise of reimagining. And I think that's, you know, that's not something that, you know, this board would stand in opposition to doing because, I mean, I think that's what we do. I mean, we, you know, as we hear all kinds of proposals coming before us, we're trying to, I think as Mrs. Griffith said, on the one hand, make sure that we honor the historical integrity of the community. That's critically important, and if you had had occasion to listen to other hearings of this board, you would hear that coming through is a constant theme for us. At the same time, we understand that we're in a time in which there are many proposals that are coming before us, not only before us, but also through, before the planning committee itself that challenges some of the historical tendencies in terms of design. So, we have to weigh, we have to weigh all of that. I do think that where Ms. Harris made reference to the color scheme and what it certainly is, again, impressive, but again, it also draws attention to this property as distinct from, again, the rest of the neighborhood. So it's, the exercise of reimagining is a bit challenging. I just want to be honest about that. With that said, I don't see a reason to not support the proposal. I think there are a variety of conditions, and I'm going to mention some, and I think we'll turn to our council for others that I will not have captured, but I think would be necessary for this project. We've heard from our board that consideration needs to be given to making sure that there is a proper dry well on this property, the location, as well as the size of the dry well. And so, we want to make sure that that is, in fact, sufficiently attended to. Additional question as to whether or not there should be additional drainage facilities beyond what is already being proposed inside the garage, recognizing the water, the potential for water in the driveway. There is a second condition that is related to the grade of the driveway. You've indicated a willingness to make sure that it does not exceed 10%. And I think that needs to be stated as a condition of approval. There is a third item mentioned by a colleague about the, and Mr. Cruz, correct me if I don't have the language exactly correct, all right? Geotechnical investigation, is that the language that you used? Well, I think, let me just go back. I mean, I articulated a potential condition regarding the stormwater management measures that may be required by the township engineer. I mean, I think it would be up to them to mandate whatever studies they would require. I mean, if this is a single-family home, brand-new coming in, and there was no board review, that's the, the township engineer would be reviewing stormwater to make sure it's adequate. So, and they may require a geotechnical study of some fashion, they may require some other study of soils and whatever, but I think we leave it to them and not particularly, let them require what they need in order to make an adequate determination.
We do have a boring test. We did get a boring soils test, so we do have that, but it's only from one location on the site.
Right, and they may require additional locations, but that's going to be up to the township engineer. Yeah. Good, all right. Then another item would relate to making sure that the proposal for windows do meet code and that there is sufficient egress that is provided for on this property. Yeah, let me just say with respect to that, I mean, obviously, the applicant's got to comply with all applicable building codes, but, you know, there was a board member that suggested that be a condition, and we could certainly put that in the resolution. Yeah. Right. And then the, I think the last one that I would note, then I'll turn to you, Mr. Sullivan, and that is with respect to foliage, that reference be given to foliage which is, meets the acceptable standards for the township of Montclair. Because your renderings suggest foliage, and we want to make sure that if there is additional planting, that it in fact does meet those conditions. Mr. Sullivan? Yeah, let me just ask Zainab, so what are we saying? Any additional plantings have to meet all Montclair attach code requirements? Is that adequately?
Yeah, I would say that covers it, which would be like native plantings and anything that's referenced in the code.
Okay, so let me just word what I think of the conditions, so if somebody wants to entertain a motion. So, the applicant's told stall a dry well and/or adequate stormwater management measures as required by the township engineer. Stipulated by the applicant, the maximum driveway slope shall...
As stipulated by the applicant, the maximum driveway slope shall not exceed 10%. The applicant shall comply with all applicable building codes, additional plantings, all additional plantings shall meet all applicable code requirements. Will add our standard conditions, the applicant shall be bound by all representations made on their behalf during the course of the public hearing. And finally, the applicant shall be responsible for all inspection fees incurred under Montclair Code Section 202-27, as well as escrow fees incurred in connection with review of this matter.
Mr. Sullivan, just one question about the slope condition. Should we just refer to the ordinance as opposed to putting an exact number on it? Because I don't know that anyone here has actually confirmed.
Do we know what that code section is?
I would say...
Or we could simply say maximum slope as permitted by ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then just one other question there is, on the planning report, there is, I
think it's a second variance, side yard setback. That's existing condition, and it's not being modified by...
We are doing a sort of minor revision there where we're bumping out the side of the house to align with the current setback. So if you look at...
Okay. Okay, I see it on the zoning plan.
Okay, so I think we're satisfied with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. That's just to make it align.
So now would be the time for a motion.
Just one other question that is, I did make reference in my remarks about refuse and, can we make a, can we impose a condition to have that stored to the back of the house as opposed to...
So you want refuse and recycling containers to be stored?
In the rear.
In the rear of the property.
Not, yeah, not in the, not in the fore.
Motion?
Did we cover everything?
I'd make a motion to accept the application with the conditions discussed and elucidated here concerning the problems that the board has cited.
As I articulated.
As you articulated, okay.
I'm not in favor of the width variance.
Of the building width. We could carve the building width variance out separately if the board's so inclined, and maybe we do that first. So maybe somebody makes a motion one way or another on the building width, and we'll see where that goes.
To be clear, that building width is a difference of six feet?
No.
No, it's a difference of...
It's eight inches.
Eight inches, yeah.
So if you want them to comply or not, or you don't care, so someone needs to make a motion, let's separate out the building width variance.
Okay, I make a motion to not approve the building width variance.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a yes vote is to deny the building width variance.
There's a question.
There's no question, the public hearing is closed.
Statement I wanted to make about the building.
Public hearing is over.
The public.
Okay, so a motion to deny the building width variance, and the voting guest is a denial, agreeing with the denial.
Correct.
Chair McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Coughlin.
No.
Mr. Church.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Sutcliffe.
Yes.
Mr. Veer.
No.
Mr. Jerry Griffin.
Is he eligible?
Yeah, I should correct myself. I thought we went through this before, but it got me confused. You are eligible, Mr. Griffith. You are the third alternate. Mr. Cruz, you are the fourth alternate, so yes, you are eligible, but we're not going to make it say which way you're going to vote, you're going to vote right now, so you're eligible.
To vote?
Yes.
I vote yes.
To deny it?
Correct.
Okay. That's everybody.
So that is...
Five in favor and two opposed. So we now need a motion on the balance, and on the balance, in addition to the conditions I articulated, we should now add a condition that the building width must comply with the ordinance.
All right. Do you want to make that motion?
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call.
Chair McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Coughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Church.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stachner.
Yes.
Mr. Veer.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Okay, that's approved.
All right. All right, thank you. Good luck with your, with your project. We're moving into the next phase.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.